Okay. Yeah. I think it's, uh, it is on tonight's regular. Yeah. Yes, I believe, uh, Mike made it note that. Thank you again for being with us tonight. We've had two meetings already. We've had a special call meeting at 5:30 and then our work session started about 6:25. We worked through it in about eight minutes, so that's pretty good. Uh, now we will move into our regular council meeting again on May 12th, 2016. And if everyone would please stand and join me in the communication class. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you with humble spirits and grateful hearts, Lord, that we live in a wonderful country, we live in a fantastic city, and we are so blessed. We thank you for the opportunities that you have blessed us with. Lord, we thank you for just the, uh, the ability to come here and contribute to our community. Lord, we just ask that you would help us to have wisdom, to help us to work together to move this city forward. And Lord, again, we just are so grateful for all that you've done for us. We are grateful for the direction that we're, uh, that we're moving into right now. And bright days are ahead for our city. We are so, so grateful. All these things we pray in Jesus' name again.
Let the Lord take the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janet, put your roll call, please. Here? Here. Sorry, I didn't hear you. It got a little loud there, right? Where did you say that?
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Sill.
Here.
And from City Manager, please.
Here.
City Attorney.
Right. Trust that everyone has had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, which is chock full of minutes. Uh, we have minutes from the April 21st call meeting, April 28th Agenda Work Session, April 28th Regular Council Meeting, April 29th Called Meeting, City Manager Interviews, April 30th Called Meeting for City Manager Interviews, April 30th Called Meeting, and then approval of the amendments and minutes from October 15th, 2015. And that was the work session agenda. Quick motion to approve. We have a motion in a second to approve. We have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott.
I have staying house in Nashville for April 21st call meeting.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sill.
Yes.
Merril.
All right, at this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. I don't know if anyone has signed in on the list there or not. If you are a resident of the city of East Ridge or are business owner here in the city and have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. If you will go forward to one of the two microphones here at the front, can state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. And we have one name, one person who has signed up, that would be Amy Moore, 2027 Pioneer Ridge Trail. I don't know if the microphone is turned on. Is the red light at the base of the microphone on? Just push that button.
There we go.
All right.
Okay, I'm Amy Moore, I'm 2027 Pioneer Ridge Trail, um, just down the road. Um, good evening, members of council. Um, I am here today to inquire about the upcoming budget that I know we are now kind of in the process of thinking about and taking into consideration for the next year. I'm a volunteer with East Ridge Animal Services and have been for almost 30 years now. Um, I've helped them in many ways over the last few years. But recently, I have been there a little bit more, doing some more volunteer work since they've been open on Saturdays, really trying to work with the dogs and cats. And I've noticed so many, um, things that need updating and that they're lacking that could, excuse me, and that they are lacking that could benefit the variety of animals they care for. The staff of the shelter over the last few months have gotten very creative, which I think is amazing. And they've tried to make the best use of what space they have to make sure they're giving the animals the best chance of finding new forever moms. I truly feel this tiny little shelter is a very important part of our city because in my eyes, who else can go around and sit and say, "I have a no-kill shelter in my town." And I'm proud to work with the staff there and that they serve our city. I love telling my friends about the great work that they do and how proud I am to volunteer there. But at the same time, I'm almost somewhat leery when they do have the opportunity to go there, actually visit the shelter itself, just because of the inadequate space, I think, and the lack of resources they have, um, from all of us. So that's kind of why I'm here. I really just kind of want to know if this is something we're going to be considering in our upcoming budget for the new year. So in closing, I would really encourage each of you, if you haven't, haven't been down there, to take time, go visit the shelter, see for yourselves kind of what I'm talking about. Meet the staff, meet the animals, see how hard they really truly do work, um, to keep the animals in our city safe. We've all heard of the children's book, The Little Engine That Could. Um, I know that was one of my favorite books. And I often, as I was thinking today, I really often think of East Ridge Animal Services as that, I feel like they're the little shelter that can make a difference, um, if they're provided with the resources and support from our city. So I thank you for your time and your concern.
Thank you, we appreciate it very much. Do we have anyone else? Yes, sir.
Matthew Lauper, 1006, Fire Lane. Uh, I'm just going up here because I think that the council needs to truly consider, uh, I've been talking about the changes to ordinance 922, the Motel Motel Ordinance, not to remove the grandfather status and put some sort of time limit on ending the ability for businesses to operate the way they used to operate. The, the citizens, um, I mean, because of the press or because of the way that the stories were told on TV, you get 30-second soundbites, they were under the impression that this ordinance did something completely different in 2012 than what it really did. You know, many people, if you ask them, thought that the council had effectively banned extended state motels, which is never what the ordinance did or was intended to do. It changed the way they were required to operate to make it so that we would be receiving head and bed tax for the entire time someone stayed there and prohibited people from being quasi apartments. Uh, I'm sure all of you understand that. The people in the city, the citizens don't necessarily understand that. They, they feel like they were sold a bill of goods, but it was, it was there the whole time. They, most people just didn't understand it. But, but I, I think that going forward, in order to have the kind of East Ridge that we all want to live in and we all want our kids to grow up in, we need to consider removing this grandfathered status, the non-conforming status from these other entities and give them some sort of timeframe to conform. Um, I know it's never good to do that to an existing business. I know it's something you usually want to try to avoid, but I think for the health and the safety of the entire community, the entire city, it's something that needs to be seriously considered. And, and so, I, I know it'll probably bring a lawsuit. I mean, that's what we have an attorney for, but, I mean, it, it really needs to be done. I, I know it's not going to be easy, uh, but it's not going to stop you from getting reelected because it'll be highly popular, I'm just saying that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, do we have another? Yes, sir.
Um, my name's Javaret. I'm with 5305 Marion Avenue, East Ridge, Long Branch there. Um, what I just want to break up is nothing that's on your agenda, maybe even on your radar. It's just that, um, I noticed that another bus that used to stop in Chattanooga, I noticed, stated that they no longer stop in Chattanooga because they have nowhere, no places to stop. And I just want to bring to East Ridge City Council, my idea of revenue sources, even though it'd probably be small because they only have like four stops to reach out to them to offer them a place to stop here and maybe collect some tax dollars from the tickets. That's all I wanted to break up, just a little guys.
Well, thank you very much. I did, I read that, that in the newspaper, I guess it was, or somewhere, I saw it, that they were pulling out of Chattanooga because of not having a place to stop anymore.
Yes.
So, thank you very much for bringing that to the council's attention. Do we have another? All right, we'll move to communication from council members. Mr. Cagle, do you have anything for us?
An answer to Ms. Moore's question. I've not stated it yet. Ms. Miller back there saying that she was going to apply for a hundred thousand dollar grant from animal shelter at the next door.
Yes, I got some, uh, well, I mean, not so much. Um, yes, we do have an upcoming grant coming up in July. Uh, however, I do need some council input from you all in order to see if we are wanting to stay in the same location or if you want to find a designated another spot. Because with some of these grants, they want to know, uh, what we're building in a shelter, where, what's it going to look like. So I kind of need direction from you all as to, uh, if we can stay in the same place, if we want to designate a new location, and kind of the budget that you want to look at. So give me some, uh, ideas if I can go after more grants, not just this one.
That structure is flooded before.
Yes. Um, staff and others agree that it would be a desire for you to put it in the same location unless you built up and you would have to build up a grant amount in order to, uh, yes. Yes, it is, you would have to actually put it on top of that hill where staff has the, it was old transportation. That would probably be the only logical place to do that, plus they don't have adequate plumbing and drainage. Uh, but somewhere that doesn't flood, uh, maybe even somewhere that has good, uh, location so that people know where it's at. I mean, sometimes it's kind of hidden behind the hospital. So if council can give me, or our management can give me some ideas of where they want it, um, and how much we want to spend as far as the look of building so I can get maybe some renderings or something from maybe one of the, uh, local engineering groups or even our own engineer that can give me some ideas about what I need from you all.
So the grant's going, so you're going to be applying for a hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, I might go apply for more, but I have to tell them.
I already have more money available.
Yeah, I'm not limited to a hundred thousand.
Oh, okay.
So, but I need to know how much we think it's going to cost, what we want, so I do need some ideas. So I'll work it out forward.
Uh, Ms. Miller.
Yes, sir.
Oh, could you, you and the folks down there, help Javaret look around on property? What I'm trying to do is let us know what the property's going to cost.
Um, well, if we have property here, you know, City of this, have this location here, um, you know, behind the city hall, at Big Brian School. I had worked with, uh, working on maybe some updates to Big Brian, either mitigating the asbestos there.
You know, behind, behind the school at first take.
Yeah, well, it, it's a little bit easier than what it is down at the animal shelter, but, uh, that could be easily resolved.
It's more of a problem of, of water collecting, you know, rather than actual flood waters coming in.
I mean, you know every word, I'm sure.
So, but if there's, uh, city property or if the city wants to purchase property, um, it's totally up to you. You just need to give me guidance as to what you all would like us to do. And I'll be happy to go after as much money as I can.
Now, if you'd have said, if y'all look around for property and they don't, so you don't have it, look for a place.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, nothing is off limits. We will take whatever we can keep in.
I would, that way, we got no option. Go on, we, uh, no, no. But the property was copied, it wasn't copied, but it'll all come here. That'll show us you.
My thanks, my thanks for going into that.
I know, Mr. Hay and I have linked at property here, uh, maybe even utilizing part of Big Brian School if necessary, or we can always look down at Camp Jordan if there's some areas down there that aren't as flooded that we can build up on that's not going to impede the neighborhood. So, um, I think we do have some other pieces of property in the city does that are wooded areas. I think, um, we have some property off of Mary Drive in the back where the, uh, water front, the slash park is going to be. I think we have.
Yeah, it was.
I, I was looking, uh, looking up here at Big Brian School, some, some area, I don't know where the cafeteria is or somewhere back in the back.
Right.
I mean, they don't, they don't much have all that that fits in. I think we can look at that. Maybe like a cause.
Oh, yeah.
But maybe a separate, just a separate structure that, that connects to.
Right, a little building, uh, kind of like the arena at Camp Jordan's, a little building, uh, something like that. Uh, you've got areas that, you know, got a lot of grass that they can utilize, which would be good for the dogs, like dog rides. Uh, they could put buffers to not, um, impede for the neighborhoods, you know, keep noise down and everything. So just as long as you all give me direction, I'll be happy to run with it.
We don't really consider no property that's in order ranges.
That's a very good point. That's a very good point. We don't want to take anything.
There's some of, I think some of it maybe.
Part of it is.
But I think some of it back towards this area may not be. I've got an app, I can definitely look into that, make sure it's not. That's why I thought of Camp Jordan, but too, uh, some of the area in the back that's not.
That's true. We don't want to take, take away anything that could potentially help us.
Dr. Seacare, it is about, some of it is a little bit small.
Yeah, I think closer to Regal Road is going to be more.
Towards the back is small. So, yeah, if council or city manager gives us some direction, I'll be happy to start getting to look more because it kind of impedes if we don't know exactly what we need, which is a building and where it's going to be.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Mr. Cagle, do you have anything else?
Mr. Gray. Yeah, a couple of things, just for the record. The, the city attorney is here tonight. He is, he is, uh, back speaking with the city manager applicant. Let's see here. I noticed that all of the fire department got up and, uh, left and it appears that there's a house fire, if I understood Chief Williams' statement correctly. So I'd like to recommend that item G be taken off of tonight's agenda and, uh, move it to the next council meeting.
Okay, so we can go ahead and do that. You'll take that?
Yeah, I make a motion to table item G until next meeting.
Okay, the motion in a second to table item G.
And, uh, we have two grants on the agenda tonight, B and D. Uh, I make a motion to put those under a consent grant agenda.
Let's, let's have a vote on the other motion persons. We have the vote, please. This would be to table item G.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sill.
Yes.
Yes.
And as I said, uh, uh, put items number B and D, or letters B and D, uh, on the, on the consent, uh, grant agenda. Go ahead and vote on both of those at one time.
Good. We could do that, and we could take care of that as we get to it.
Yes, sir. Yes, and I believe that, uh, oh, one other thing. Uh, well, everybody, it is gone to the fire. Um, if someone could, I had a constituent ask about installing a ham radio antenna in their backyard. He said they called the city, um, city hall here and spoke to someone in zoning or codes, and they didn't have clues to what he was talking about. So, um, so just check on that, uh, to see what kind of zoning or codes or notices we have concerning the ham radio antennas as far as their height.
And you, uh, you still didn't have all the records on it?
And we might not. I just, I hope I will check on it. That's what I'm doing.
I used to be a radio geek. All you got to do is make your neighbors happy so you bleed over the TV, the radio.
Good, like for some neighbors. So that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Sill.
Uh, I've got one I just want to ask you. I know for the, you know, here, uh, playground, uh, there's methods and titles. I just want to know what happened. Where's the forward end of the two? It's down there.
I don't either.
I like to find it, like what happened to those, get it replaced. A lot of people use that before they go in.
So it's all under parts and repair.
Yes, it does.
That's not related by, uh, with her size. They're stolen, that's your insurance type here.
All right. Thanks, sir. Anything else?
I like for, uh, just to go about getting some new tables for our new video down there. We've got this part due tonight.
Yep, it is, it's item I, I believe, so we will definitely talk about that. All right. I had one, uh, I had one question, uh, that I guess is similar to, you know, do we have anything on the books for ham radio antennas? This is a different subject, but same kind of question. I think the vice mayor and I both received an email regarding someone who was complaining that their neighbor was draining their pool water into their backyard. And so they've had.
The neighbor's backyard.
The neighbor's backyard, right. So they had, they've had testing, none of the soil, and there's high chlorine levels and all sorts of things. And obviously, that's not very, not very neighborly, but, uh, but beyond that, it could potentially be, be dangerous, so.
I don't need to feel a law, there could not turn on your neighbors.
Well, it's killed several of her plants in a couple of times.
So if, if we could look into that, make note of that, and, uh. Thank you. Yeah, and that's, that's one of those things that seems like would be common sense, but, you know, there's a lot of things in this world that seem like common sense that, uh, so anyway, that's the only thing that I had. And vice mayor Brandon is correct. Uh, Chief Williams told me that they had an emergency, uh, that potentially an assisted living, I think he said, uh, assisted living complex, and they were going over there. So he, he may be back, he may not be back. I would say probably not, but just wanted to let you know that. And before we go into old business, I know we've got Bob Devil here who would like to do a, is, I saw it earlier, I'm looking for if we can find it. Uh, that would like to do a presentation on, uh, the potential remote area medical clinic. And so, council, uh, we can actually stay where we are.
It's not working.
It's, it's not working?
No.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Uh, do you have, do you have anything that you would like to share with us from on this presentation?
I have about 80 slides I've kind of pre-sent with you, and so I'll just.
Maybe we can do the slides for the next time.
That's fine, that's fine. Um, as I said, we work with the, uh, headquarters, national headquarters of remote area medical. We, uh, we're big with RAM up in Knoxville, so we coordinate locally. And, uh, so we, um, had a very good clinic in 2012 over at Camp Jordan. And saw where 880 patients gave away over 379,000 dollars of care, free medical, vision and dental, and actual classes on site, do a lot of extractions doing things like that. Because the scheduling in 2014 went towards a high school. As a result of that experience, we realized that Camp Jordan, uh, was a much better facility to work from. We just heard also its accolades from the core people who come down from Knoxville. And not only, you know, you alluded to earlier in terms of blessings, we're blessed with nice facility there, which also blessed with fantastic staff. Stunt, Bill Lowens, Janet Todd was on scanning, just made it much easier for us to host this from that standpoint. So we would, we'd like to request waiver fees for September 29th, 30th, and October 1st, 2017 in order to have another, uh, remote area medical clinic at Camp Jordan.
Uh, I can actually think of a big one, where is her?
Well, our. Basically, what happens is it takes about eight hours to set up. So Friday, we would come in and set up Friday morning, and then we open doors at 6 o'clock, go Saturday and Sunday, first come, first served. So we would bring them into the parking lot and then the overflow from that standpoint. Uh, the police department was very helpful, but actually, we have Tennessee State Guard that's there for security because my biggest concern is, you know, people jockeying in positions, trying to overcome things like that. Pretty much they're the quad group, knowing they're eventually going to get, you know, business care. So then it takes about four hours to break down. In other words, all this equipment, we had 52 dental chairs set up on the floor of Camp Jordan, 12, uh, vision lanes from that standpoint. Those are the two big components, it's vision and dental. Medical is very small because most people have chronic conditions and can't take full care of on site, so we will refer them out to agencies. And we get people from, uh, you know, not only him, the county, we'll get them from Orange County, we'll get them from three, four hours a night. And we do have good supporters, good sponsors that I work for, the Seifers, Horst, Bass, Bass, and Fort. Another cooperative agreement we've had, the, the first two years that we had it was with, um, Vision Hospitality, which Mattel gave us 35 rooms, both Friday and Saturday night motel rooms for visiting people that come in, in terms of medical providers on that standpoint. TB3 jumped on board in 2014 and did a lot of 30 and 15-second spots to really bring. One of the dilemmas we had, I feel badly about this, in 2012 is I actually moved to Superior Creek lot because we didn't have enough patients. We had to shut down a little bit early Saturday afternoon, and that was, you know, not making for this, but it won't happen again.
This one that you asked, why?
Yeah, the stunt, this, the date's okay, or those dates?
Yes, the dates, the dates are good. He's, he's been actually working with us ever since the last time he was here to try to get a date, and we have not had a date available. That date is available moving forward to the year he wants it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve?
Yes.
In a second. Thank you so much.
We thank you with a thousand patients that we're going to treat, well, thank you.
Well, we appreciate the work that you do, and, uh, it's, it's important work that some kind of goes under the radar a little bit, but, uh, boy, you do a fabulous job.
Well, but it takes the cooperation of a bunch of people.
Thank you. Give effort for sure. Thank you. Janet, we could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sill.
Yes.
So we will backtrack to item A under Old Business Ordinance Number 1006. And I will read it since, since Al is, uh, is not, not back with us yet. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number 989 entitled to the ordinance to provide revenue for the City of East Ridge, Tennessee for the fiscal year July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016, appropriating the same to the payment of expenses of municipal government by changing the revenues of the general fund and grant fund, by changing the expenditures of the general fund, grant fund, and DOJ federal forfeiture fund. Uh, it's before us for first reading. This was tabled on April 28th. And recent was tabled is, uh, a request was. And recently was stapled is, uh, a request was made for, uh, something in an itemized list.
Yes, and then you find that the time the budget. That shows exactly the line items that he believes were going to be.
I'll make a vote.
Take off, take it.
We have a motion to take this off the table. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
And a second. Janet, we could have the roll call, please. This is a motion to take this item off the table.
Councilmember Everett?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember May?
Yes.
Councilmember Silver?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. This item, uh, ordinance number one thousand six, it has, uh, has been taken off the table, and is ready to be considered.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I've got some questions.
Second. Do we have a second? Yes, sir.
Community center, you want to raise a ten thousand dollar due to part-time employees? So were they were hired after the budget?
No, sir, they were two of our employees who were already here, but because of the, uh, requirements in the Affordable Healthcare Act, if they work over twenty-nine hours a week, and we go back and look at our look back here, if they work over that amount, you have to offer them health insurance. We're required to, or be hired, and they-
Oh, they have to work twenty-nine hours?
Yeah, they, they worked more than that, and because we used to be able to work them thirty-two hours.
So when did we put them in?
Um, did they come?
When did we put them on the insurance?
I would say it was right, probably August, August.
August. Eleven months. Because this regional budget, is, is that for one employee?
That was for one employee, yes, sir.
Part-time employee, okay.
Yes, sir, and we had only three in the city that actually worked more hours, and we offered them healthcare and they took it.
All righty, now down to the, uh, uh, recreation plans. Our, uh, TML insurance, our insurance pool, we've got, this insurance is playing here. Is this, uh?
I'm gonna let Mr. Martin come up and help explain. This is player insurance. This is for sports, it is not covered by TML, it's a separate policy.
So they're gonna pay for individual players?
No, actually, you're-
You understand the question, Mr. Martin?
No, should I do that?
All right, this insurance, if they're asking for twenty-five hundred additional dollars, uh, that is, but the sheet is saying it's for, the players will be insured out here.
In, in which sport?
Well, actually, you know, all-
Recreation, it's for our-
Here's, here's, here's what happens. In soccer, we go through Tennessee State Soccer. In our other sports, we have to acquire insurance ourselves, which we've been doing business with these sports, uh, ever since we've been here, and it costs X amount of number of dollars per child. Uh, once we exceed what we budgeted for the year before, then we've got more kids coming in, and we've got, we're paying more for insurance because those kids coming in, but that has nothing to do with our TML insurance. That's insurance we have to have on the kids.
But also, the cost of that insurance is incorporated into the fees that they pay.
Correct, correct. They're paying for their insurance.
So when they pay to play the sport, they're helped, they're paying for their uniforms, they're paying for the insurance, but then we are billed for those, so we turn around and the money that comes in, we pay back out.
That was a fee.
Yes, that was a fee.
A non-budget item?
No, it's in the budget.
I, I mean, it's funded in second.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
The more kids we've got, the more we pay.
Yes.
We go through this every year with, uh, uniforms and such, you know, we don't remember how many people.
As you can tell, yeah, I think-
As long as we continue to grow, and we're growing, and that's, we see that as a good thing, but, you know, I hope that next year, when I vary the budget, that we go over it again with the number of people that, that are down there.
Now, I think I talked to you about this, and said we're just gonna try to up a little bit.
Yes, sir, we will, we will, uh, we will anticipate, but they had lots of over fourteen hundred indoor soccer players.
Well, I understand you're right, Mr. Martin, when they pay the, you know, they also pay for their own-
Yes, sir, their, their uniforms and everything is figured into that, and we, we, we did make money on that. I mean, it's, you know, it's figured in. We, we know for a little per child what we usually make.
The only thing is we just don't know how to need them children, I don't know what.
Yes.
Well, that's, that was my next thing, got the clothing uniforms, I know it's the indoor soccer, and the, uh, recreation soccer. The, uh, price of uniform, one of them went up five thousand, the other ones went up, three thousand, so, uh-
That's correct. We went, the, uh, the rest of-
And that's not on pay share?
No, not for indoor. The reason it went up indoor is because we had more people, but the reason our recreation soccer would have gone up is because we added about five dollars per uniform this year, because when, uh, CFC got the contract deal with Nike, they came to us and said, you want this contract deal with Nike, which benefits CFC in the long run, because they get more Nike points. So what we did is go back to BSN and get our uniforms and get a better deal than what CFC got. So we're wearing Nike uniforms to play, uh, soccer in, which is mainly a different shirt, and, uh, it got, it went up five dollars on those. So between the number of kids we added, and the fact we put them in a, in the same uniforms that the other ones are using, then it went up, yes.
All right, same thing basketball, says eighty players here, and I figured that is forty-four dollars and twenty-one cents a uniform?
Mm-hmm.
Second pair of shorts and a t-shirt.
That's correct.
Forty-four dollars per player.
That's just about what it's gonna cost, yes. I mean, it's, it's not, and it's not, it's not a t-shirt, uh, Councilman Cagle, and it's not, I mean, if you look at uniforms nowadays, and you get a decent uniform, it's fifty dollars. If you got, you can't go out and buy a pair of gym shorts that, that if you go out there, they're thirty-two to thirty-nine dollars. I mean, it's just the prices nowadays. Back when, we're doing this twenty years ago, we could really get good deals, but it's just the way it is. And we wanna make sure that ours are wearing competitive uniforms to what others do, and that also drives our numbers up, because people wanna come over here and play here, because we do things right, and we have nice shoes.
All right, I wonder, we were discussing the, the CFC contract.
Yes, sir.
I asked you a question, why is the CFC gonna have an expenditure, y'all come when they don't? They've got a revenue account, they don't have an expenditure account, so who is it that's paying the problem that's paying that we're putting on the CFC soccer field down after these tournaments?
We're, we're, we're paying roughly, that's part of the deal, and we're paying twenty-five figure that, uh, that it's between two thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars a year, that we feel like the CFC purchase impact.
Okay, so are you charging that for recreation soccer?
Uh, where do we put that?
That is put to fi, uh, fields.
Fields, field maintenance, field maintenance, that would be two sixty-five.
They increased the field maintenance.
Yeah, which is fifty-five thousand dollars.
The amount to offset. They didn't put a separate line up. If y'all wanted to be a separate line up, we can put it in as a separate line up, but we, right now, it's just incorporated into field maintenance.
I'd like to, expenditure account for CFC.
Stunt.
Um, you know.
I don't have a problem with it.
And we can put it under recreation, well, under soccer, and put it as, you know, field maintenance, and you'll see what they spent on field.
I'd like to see that, and I'd like indoor soccer and, uh, uh, recreation soccer, CFC soccer, so that we can do that. If we're getting forty thousand dollars, and which we're spending on CFC soccer, uh, it's like this last target we had down here, two hundred and nineteen tables?
That was not a CFC joint.
What?
No, sir. It's not a CFC, that's our, that's our tournament, too. There's, uh, five years ago, when I first got here, or four and a half, whatever it was, we sat down at a table together, and at that point in time, nobody in soccer got along. We worked out a deal to where we would start to try to have one of the biggest tournaments in the south, but to do that, we were all gonna have to learn to play nice, and we sat there at the table, and they divided it up between North River, CFC, Camp Jordan, which at the time, and is it still, is East Ridge Football Club, which is our five oh one C three, and then the other one is, uh, Reedout. Our cut is a little bit larger than the rest of them. Uh, we made approximately seventeen to eighteen thousand dollars off of that, which went into our five oh one C three account, which yesterday, they delivered a new lawnmower, that ERFC go in unanimously, uh, to buy for the city, uh, and, uh, the mayor and, uh, Mr. Manning, and that's a, a story that's coming out, uh, tomorrow, but that they accepted, uh, that on behalf of the city, uh, and then those other monies that's gonna be left over, but since that's a five oh one C three account, those monies will be spent back, because five oh one C three is not set up to make money. It's set up as the money comes in to spend back on the, on the park, so that'll be coming back. But yes, we made, uh, seventeen or eighteen thousand, and, and we had volunteers work that. Yes, there was a CFC guy that was paid to be the tournament director, but all of us were, were working out there volunteer mainly, except for our people, which was working.
How much was the tournament director?
I don't know that. I mean, it's in, it's in the deal, I had to give Tim Morgan that to see, but it's figured into it.
You know, I, I've never seen a East Ridge soccer, five oh one C three budget, or financials, or anything else.
She's, she's the treasurer, she'd be more happy to do it.
It has, it has nothing to do with the city. It's a separate entity.
But here, here's my issue, Mr. Cagle, if you have-
It is, I mean-
Okay, well-
I mean, I'm, I'm gonna start again if you-
Well, you can chew on that, right? All right, help me understand something here. You said that you've got the soccer fees that pay for uniforms and stuff like that, and why are there uniforms listed on here?
That's just, quote-
Because you have, you're spending money out. You've got the revenues coming in, it's a long sum, but as we pay for everything, it has, it comes down as, we have uniforms, we have officials, we have the referees, the umpires, those are paid, all that, you know.
I understand, but, but, it wouldn't that be paid out of the soccer, after, out of the registration fees?
And we see all of that money, because it's recreation, it's, it's, parts of recreation goes into the general fund.
Well, this is, this is exactly one, where recreation should have their own separate money.
Yes, but if they have their own fund, it's gonna be the same thing. You're gonna see the revenues coming in, but you're also gonna see all the expenditures going out.
Yeah, and that, that's mine, that's-
But you're not gonna have it till the next year, is what we're trying to say.
But-
And the general fund will supplement it for the year you get up.
You know, uh, here's my whole point on this. How much money are we projected to have surplus?
Right now, I cannot tell you how, yeah, you can't tell me when the audit is known, because you don't know for sure, but right now, at the end of April, I have not closed the month, I haven't done everything, but right now, the general fund has a one point one million dollar surplus.
Okay.
That is what the general fund has.
Okay. Here, here's one of the issues that I've got with this. Uh, the, we, right now, according to this, under the general fund, we're amending the general fund, uh, by four hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Yes, sir.
But at the same time, we're, we're spending all but just, you know, a few thousand dollars right back out.
Yes, sir, we're increasing our revenues, because they have come in at a higher expectation than we thought. You really don't have to amend your revenues if you don't want to during the year. I prefer it, that's the way I was trained. You want to give as true numbers as you can for each year, and that's offsetting, and you, we came up with like, I think, a twenty-five thousand dollar difference between the amount I increased and how much I'm projecting to use.
Well, he, here's my whole, here's my point. You know, we, we have spent substantially down, as, as everyone's well aware, out of our, out of our general fund surplus, rainy day accounts, and, um, uh, I'm just really apprehensive about making any, um, any major expenditures that, that we're not putting in the budget right now. We, we've got, I mean, and we haven't even started with exit one yet, and, you know, we're looking at two major, two major issues, economic development issues that cost a lot of money, and we need to, we need to save all of our, all of the-
Well, yes, sir, yeah, but right now, our revenues are coming out in our expenditures, and that's even, with some of things are already, like, just this month, we write there, general government, because of the medical claims, have hit that hundred percent, and according to the, you know, the guidelines that we have to go by, we have to, in the budget to reflect, we have an increase. So we, we are blessed that we are able to, we've got the, the revenues coming in to offset this. Next year, in the new budget that we're working on right now, I can give you an option, we can leave, we can have two. We can have the parks and recreation done as a separate budget, so you can, y'all can see if you want it that way. We also have to do it that-
I think that would make it easier for everyone to understand.
But then we also, you know, can put it in the general fund. We can start it separate if y'all decide you don't want it that way, then have to incorporate it back into the general fund. Y'all, you know, tell me how you want it done, you know?
Well, that, well, I think it ought to be separate.
That you would like for it to be separate?
I think it just would make it easier to understand.
Okay.
That's all it is. I know Mr. Martin thinks it's to put a bullet on, a, a bullseye on his back, but that's not the intent.
I don't think that. I, I understand where you're coming from. I, 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 I respect that. I'll never agree with you on it, but I respect it.
Well, I know, because you stated that, that, that would put a bullseye on your back in a, in a meeting last year when I first brought this up.
But that bullseye is not as bad as it used to be.
But, but, you know, it, it's nothing against you or Parson, it's, it's simply transparency for the citizens, that's all it is, you know?
Can I, can I, can I correct something, Mr. Cagle, before you bring this up in another meeting? I have to answer it. Uh, you said forty-four dollars per, that is not correct. Your numbers might be correct, and we can stand here and break down everything we do, but our uniforms are nowhere near forty-four dollars. When we figure out how much per kid, we're figuring out a uniform, we're figuring out how many games they're gonna play, how many referees that they're gonna have, how many basketballs we're gonna have to buy, and all that, and it all goes into one deal, and then I have X amount of number of dollars left, that I plan on us being able to make to pay for everything, plus put a little bit back for the city moving forward on each one of them, so no, we did not spend forty-four dollars on uniforms.
Now, where I got that figure? Final budget, thirty-five, thirty-seven?
Right.
Okay. Five out of eight, you cover the forty-four dollar and twenty-one cents. How, how I got that figure?
No, I understand, but there's, there's a lot more to it than just uniforms, plus you can get real confused on this, because as we have more, more than one child per family in East Ridge, then it, it drops down, there's reduction. So if you've got four or five kids in your family, we're not making as much money per kid, and that takes everything down, and that kinda changes it up, too. So if there's, it, it's hard to get a exact number, but yes, we can get an exact number.
That's all I had to go by, that's what I-
No, I understand, but I wanna make sure that we were clear on that.
All right, I'm through with recreation.
Thank you, sir.
Now, my next one is, uh, I've got my march. Spent some money for the DOG portal for that. So we're going with a minus twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. Minus twelve seventy-five. Twelve seven oh nine, two eight, plus of, uh, nine eight eight eight, so.
Yes, sir.
Kind of explaining why this one's so much in a deficit, and this one's way ahead now.
Well, because we have- Well, because we had, they were purchasing tasers, and it's really hard to explain the department, the department, just as federal forfeiture fund. You have to spend those funds, they're not budgeted items, and they have to have the chief come up and help explain this one. Some of these funds, like the drug fund and federal forfeiture fund, have very different rules, but he, they had purchased tasers, and so they were not budgeted, nothing was budgeted in the, uh, department, the federal forfeiture. Passed the budget, nothing was budgeted because they didn't plan on spending any of that. Then they had, they bought tasers because we got so many of them, so they paid.
So we adjusted that fund for that type of thing?
Yes, sir.
Where did we get that money?
The money that's in there. They have money in the bank account. They have a bank, there's a federal forfeiture, uh, bank account, there is a drug fund bank account. That specific money's going to those, um, those are audited, they're audited by our auditor, and then they are also audited by the federal government through the federal forfeiture. The drug sum is audited by the auditors, and then the state can come in and audit.
So the fund balance that we're talking about is two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars?
On that budget, I didn't hear you say it.
I said the fund balance that was designated to the original budget of the DOG forfeiture fund was two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Yeah, that was where y'all had amended the previous, they were something, they stopped being that one, and y'all amended for that. And then they have purchased tasers, so we need to amend for the tasers. Like I said, that money is in their bank account.
But the revenue's not showing this year.
No, we don't, well, they only give revenue when the federal government gives them something, and they, when they are, when something is forfeiture. And this year, as far as I know, we have not received anything, but we had funds in there from previous years. In fact, I believe in the last budget that Congress passed, uh, they actually stopped the federal forfeiture. Right now, the cities are getting nothing, or the counties are not getting anything.
Well, just, just recently, within just the last, the last thirty days, they can have it in back, but they have substantially cut it. But we went for about, I believe it was October or November five, uh, but just until recently, that the federal for, forfeitures were, were actually on hold. So any federal cases that were, were involved, you know, that there was a settlement that were in City of East Ridge, we were, we were, uh, we're any percentage of that, everything was put on hold, then just recently it went back up. So there is a couple of cases that we did have on the federal side, but we have a goal that we're gonna get out of, that's basically, I look to do it better.
Can you give us any idea of what we'll get your computers and place your orders?
Well, you would have to, I've waited this question a bunch of times, you said a few weeks, or?
I can, well, I could give you extremely good news. Uh, the last two weeks, we've made several connections with the other, uh, entities that we have to connect to, which has, has been fantastic. Uh, actual training for patrol guys, uh, those are our trial, we'll start this next week. So, uh, with some of the training, you have to remember, uh, it's state mandated because what they have access to, and, uh, the access that they have through that laptop, if, unfortunately, you don't want to think that anybody would, but if they make a serious mistake, they can be terminated immediately for that, uh, because of the guidelines that we have to follow. So we want to make sure we get everybody trained up on the software, um, that goes all together and has the ability to, to run different things.
I would want to call, no, how long have we had the computers?
Uh, we started getting them in about October of last year. And it's been a, it's been a long climb, like I, like I've said before, nobody ever really anticipated us ever getting to this point. Uh, there was no easy mic to follow, everything we've had to do, we've had to start at scratch, uh, where all the other agencies have had some of this stuff for over ten years.
And you've probably heard of that.
Yes, we're going to. So, and we've done it pretty much self-funded. We, we have garage counsel asking for a lot of money, everything we've done, we've done pretty much in-house.
Have our, have our men officers, excuse me, our officers now got their body cameras?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're working through some phases with the body cameras, as you know, we first, we're the first in the area to really have a full fleet of them. Since then, the manufacturer have upgraded a couple of times, the cameras themselves, uh, since it was their first round as well. So we've, we've been exchanging some old versions for some updated versions, um, to, to try to get through that first initial phase, so, but we're, we're getting there, and it's good.
One more question, not at y'all. How about, of shotguns? A gun with you?
Our rifles? Rifles, yes, we, uh, we've, we've gotten in the last of the rifles, we've got to try to get a training day put together, um, there's a two-day course that if you, if you've not been certified or qualified with rifle, you have to go through the two-day course. If you've had some prior certification on rifles, then it's a one-day course. But it's a matter of getting on a hundred-yard range, which limits our options in this area, as you know, Collegeville doesn't, uh, at this point, have a hundred-yard range, so we have to work at the city-county range to get the qualifications.
Okay, thank you, sir.
But we're there.
Thank you, sir.
Next seat. All right, if we have no other questions, uh, do we have a, a motion in regard to, actually, we, we did have a motion in the second to approve, so we will move to roll call, please.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stole?
Yes.
Mayor O'Neal?
Yes. Yes. Item B is, uh, discuss or take action on board appointments. Uh, the fully wood lift, that's one that needs to be filled, and, uh, I asked about this earlier today, and, uh, it's my understanding that there's nothing wrong with this, I'm gonna put, uh, put Sarah Lambert on the library board. Lambert. It's his own, his own thing that he worked on, but, uh, it's not, but I do want to talk about. I do. Probably not somebody who.
Second, I, I'm sure.
That may be what we're talking about, I think, uh, Kenny had, had talked about providing the old housing, housing board, and, well, we would, we would need to go through.
Oh, you're dealing with them, but I don't know if it can.
Well, we don't actually have anything here to say.
Okay, well, you did, we're making a motion now, then you tell your comments.
Okay. Well, uh, again, we, that is something that, uh, for various reasons, I'm sure Kenny can explain it better than I can, uh, there's a need within the city to revive the old housing board as a, a mechanism for providing an appeals process. And, again, he could explain it much better than I can, but he's not here.
And he, he's playing, we need to head up, one, and, and call the work and all this stuff.
There are three, three of the, three of the body members need to have some kind of...
This one does, okay.
Need to have some kind of construction background.
He has, he really, he can put building suns house and a bunch of other stuff, so he does have that. What case is for him?
All right. Do we have, uh, have anything else in regard to, of, of, we will hopefully have that as a, the housing board as a formal item on the next, next agenda.
Don't care.
All right, we're gonna stop that, gets us through old business, we've already dealt with a couple of items in the business.
Ask this one, go on this one.
We do, Bill. Sorry about that.
Chad background check.
Yeah, I used her first name, Sarah, because if I used her middle name, you'd think I'm, I'm telling a story. Her name's Miranda Lambert. And so, and so, uh, she goes, she goes by me, but, uh, it is actually her name, so I'll use your first name, Sarah. And, and I, I would like to, uh, uh, put that out in the form of a motion, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stole?
Yes.
Mayor O'Neal?
Yes.
Okay, so we will stop right there, and, uh, Mr. North has, has rejoined us, and I will turn over again, but give us some updates.
Just may add, the council's instruction, I have negotiated an employment agreement with J. Scott Miller, and I would pass, like, passes out to the council. Do you need this information? Would you like me to, I can go over the basic terms and provisions.
Don't care. Please, if you would, yeah, but just to, just to let you know, Chief Williams had to leave, there was a, an emergency that all of our, our folks went to.
Uh, the employment agreement is consistent with that previously done by, um, former city attorneys. It provides that if the terms and provisions of the employment agreement vary from the terms and provisions of the city charter, the city charter, uh, does control. The term of the initial employment agreement is one year. It requires, is required by the charter, that, uh, Mr. Miller shall within ninety days establish his permanent residency within corporate limits of East Ridge. The compensation under the proposed agreement subject to city council approval is a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. Uh, with regard to retirement, the city agrees to pay the equivalent of five percent of the base salary of Mr. Miller, and to the International City Management Association Retirement Corporation, a half of Mr. Miller. And again, it's my understanding that was consistent with our prior city managers here at the city. Uh, Mr. Miller will have the use of and drive, um, the city's Volkswagen automobile. With regard to the health insurance, uh, the city will pay Mr. Miller's Medicare supplement prescription cost, uh, which amounts to a total of a hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents per month, in addition to dental and optical coverage provided by the city. Uh, Mr. Miller would be entitled to minimum life insurance coverage, as is currently paid by East Ridge for the other employees of the city, uh, their standard professional, uh, development, um, costs that the city would bear with regard to, uh, Mr. Miller's membership in and travel to, for example, International City Managers Association meetings, Tennessee City Managers Association meetings, and so forth. The relocation expenses of East Ridge under this agreement would reimburse Mr. Miller for the actual cost of his relocation, uh, to East Ridge in an amount not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. So in any event, those costs, around a thousand dollars, the city would be responsible for more than one thousand dollars. The city would also reimburse Mr. Miller for the actual temporary housing assistance for a maximum of four weeks, in an amount not to exceed two thousand dollars. Again, the city would be liable, responsible for the actual amount, not the full two thousand dollars if that does not occur on Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller will receive two weeks or eighty hours to take vacation during the year, and two weeks or eighty hours of paid sick. With regard to termination and severance pay, under this agreement, if termination occurs, uh, without cause during the initial twelve months of this agreement, uh, a lump sum payment equal to one month's base salary would be paid to Mr. Miller. If some, upon subsequent renewal of this contract, uh, Mr. Miller is terminated without cause, a lump sum payment equal to four months' base salary would be paid by the city. To the extent that Mr. Miller is terminated hereafter from cause, East Ridge would have no obligation whatsoever to pay his severance. Uh, Mr. Miller voluntarily, uh, if he decides to voluntarily resign his position with the city, uh, he must give East Ridge thirty days notice in advance, and would be entitled to no severance pay from East Ridge. East Ridge would be subject to the standard indemnification clause if Mr. Miller, um, is sued with regard to his capacity as a city manager, uh, for all things, got lower or intentional conduct, the city would, um, reimburse him and, and defend him in any legal action. And I believe that's basically the highlights of.
Okay, well, one time you get, bring up, uh, time to say over the door, saying city manager, you treat a city manager, agree on it?
I don't recall this ever, the council member.
Well, this is in regard to the seal on the, the side of the Volkswagen. Uh, I think you had said you were okay with the city seal.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, gotcha. She come back in, told us he was okay with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I have a personal card, no use, personal use.
Let me read another, the issue was raised about this lawsuit, uh, currently ongoing in Leonardworth County. It may be that Mr. Miller did some on his requirement to travel to Leonardworth to testify, or, I want to give this deposition. The agreement provides that the cost and time spent by Miller for travel related to non-city business shall be borne by Miller and credited against his vacation and or sick leave. So, again, the city would not, uh, be paying Mr. Miller for his time span on non-city business.
I would not kind of like to go, because sort of Miller looked glad, but she had, she should have already asked him to move out of the Volkswagen, and she had come back and told us, you did have any problems with that.
No, I don't know.
That's the reason I brought it up.
That'll be good. No, no problem. Okay. We have a motion to approve the contract?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve?
Can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
All right, if we set this contract, does that mean we're hiring more?
Absolutely, we can hire him for a year.
Okay, thank you. Subject, subject is a agreement.
Well, he's already signed it, so.
Okay, gotcha.
It's subject to, uh, a legal extension, but I agree with that.
Jen, we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember, uh?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Manning?
No.
Councilmember Stole?
Yes.
Mayor O'Neal?
Yes.
Thank you.
And nothing gives you surgery, no, nothing gives you at all.
Well, thank you.
I'll have to go, let's.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And, uh, we, we look forward to, uh, to working with you. Uh, we've got, mentioned earlier, one of the meetings we've had here tonight, that, uh, we, we have, feel like we have a very bright future, and we look forward to, to working with you and realizing a lot of our business around there.
Thank you. We look forward to working with, with the mayor's conditions, citizens of the community and part of the, we need to see it for you.
Thank you.
Bye.
With that, we will move to, back to our regular business, item A, a new business.
Order number one thousand nine, ordinance of pending orders number nine twenty-two, which previously amended East Ridge zoning orders, separate with sections one fifteen point three, minimum hotel and extended stay hotel requirements and standards, subsections E and J, section one fifteen point four, minimum hotel requirements, subsection H, by adding additional section one fifteen point five.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sentence, one zero zero nine. I'd like to make a motion to approve this, uh, one zero zero nine, with the exception, I like to see, uh, this applies to all of the motels, hotels, and once it's, uh, put to a year to get the other back in. The very good, what, what this is supposed to be?
To, to give them a, a time period of, they're aware to, to conform, conform to, to the, of the order states.
One year, two years, to get home?
The, once it's not. And you got to go in, I won't mention these names.
Got a couple of those. I guess you can't see this later, or, or places.
Mayor, I'm going to need to look at, um, the legality of doing that. Basically, it's a grandfather. What I understand this, which the council will say is.
Yeah, I'll take away the grandfather clause.
Take away the grandfather, and give them two years to come into the form.
Right. I understand.
Um, I'll take them, certainly, this is your first reading.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Second, do we have any questions?
Well, are you voting on Mr. Stoll's amendment, or are you voting on what's the current orders?
I think the way he phrased the motion was to accept this with the exception of creating a two-year window during which they must come into compliance.
Eliminating, eliminating grandfather laws, giving them two years to come into compliance. Yes, I will, sir.
Okay, do we have any, any questions? Certainly, I'm sure there will be more discussion in two weeks with the, with the next round, so.
They look in with it.
Right. Chad.
The way this is written, this person moves out in eighty-nine days. And they can turn right around tomorrow, sign right back in for ninety-one days, stay their active for six months.
Well, they can't stay any more than ninety consecutive days.
I said eighty-nine days.
Right. You said ninety more.
I said ninety-one, I give them a hundred and eighty days.
They, they can't under, the way this is written, there is a cap of one hundred and eighty days in any calendar year.
Eighty-nine, and turn right around tomorrow and check right back in.
Or another eighty-nine. Now, it, it's something the planning commission kind of ravelled with was, was what that cap should be. At first, we talked about a hundred and twenty days, and then it ended up at a hundred and eighty days. And, and that's subject to, to be amended, is what the council desires then. You know, and I, I, I'm the one who actually suggested both. I suggested a hundred and twenty, and then the conversation went in a direction that ended up saying, okay, a hundred and eighty. I would be fine taking it back to a hundred and twenty. Now, I, what's, and I ended up saying a hundred and eighty because, they, once you exceed being at a, a particular place for, for more than half a year, you're living there, it's, it's not. Yeah, that's, that's my opinion. And that's why that hundred and eighty day provision was, was in there. That's why it was specifically a hundred and eighty days. Uh, but again, council could, could certainly change that, adjust that upper down.
Mr. Mayor, as I recall, the discussion at the planning commission stage was, we were going to invite, uh, the owners of some of these extended stay hotels to come in and effectively tell us whether this was an issue for them, or a problem for them, or if they could live on, uh, the reduced number. Now, I don't know whether, uh, why not that?
Kenny, I talked to Kenny last week about it, and he was going to attempt to, to put that meeting together. I had not heard.
Well, I'm sure they were coming to, I'm specifically the council, to address the council. I think I can do that in two weeks.
Perhaps, we, we could always have a workshop of some kind, or have a workshop prior to the next regular council meeting.
One, one thing that hopefully is a deterrent for people just effectively moving in for the long term, these places, is that, um, under the provisions, you can't furnish, um, the facility, the apartment, or whatever it is, with furniture, um, owned by the occupant, or, words, they can't move their own furniture in, you've got to, uh, use their furniture.
Also, look, they have, have made sure this works, so they could do it.
Right.
They do.
Another part of my question is now, is, uh, I've stayed here now how many days? This is extended stay. Do you move to another extended stay?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, can.
He's not.
If they go, then they are back to that one.
And, you know, at some point, it becomes impossible to, but, yeah, I mean, we're, we've reached the limit of what can be legislated, it's, it's a bull.
Right.
Yeah.
And as we talk about the planning commission, a lot of this is going to, um, to be difficult to monitor. And we're gonna have to have the full personnel to, you know, it's a function of physically going out and inspecting where roads are registered, or whatever, period of improvement is.
In a, in a conversation, it also included the, the possibility of hiring a, a person in code enforcement. And this would be there to, to monitor extended stays and potentially other rental properties. But, uh, that's, that is a possibility. This would be a time-consuming activity. But again, there is opportunity between now and second reading to, to change some of the provisions here. This is just first reading. I'll question.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gravitt.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
I'm gonna stay, I'm staying till the seventh reading, if I have a chance, I'm studying this one.
Councilmember Manning.
Stay.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
It is approved on first reading? Yes, that was a request made earlier by, by spares that we, excuse me, put, uh, V and D together, they are related to grants.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, you have a motion to approve? We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gravitt.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Item C, resolution twenty-five sixty-three.
Resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor and the city manager to execute the attached contract with the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation. The city of East Ridge to provide loading services to the I seventy-five exit one interchange for fiscal year sixteen seventeen on a reimbursement basis.
Make a motion to approve. We have a motion, do we have a second? I will. I have a second.
I've got some issues, but I like, well, excuse me, I think you passed fifteen thousand dollars to mow this, uh, area, and I know it, it looks nice. Then they reduced it down to eight thousand dollars. And what we, and it's costing the city around forty-five thousand to do. Plant hours, and we always have five lawn doors or such. I, I think that we need to look at this year, if it's approved, to, uh, they, they give us okay to do this, and go out and, like you mentioned, wildflower, flowers, cut it in the middle, and then you just have paths to cut around, around that area, and then you just cut those wildflowers down, no time for them to, uh, fall, they die out. I do that a lot different places, but it looks nice. I mean, I know, we've slayed out now, but all the way through the interstate, it's like, red lawns, it looks real nice.
I have, have no problem whatsoever with that. I, I would just hate to lose the ability for us to, to mow when we want to mow it. And that's, you know, this contract allows us to do that, so that if we have a big, you know, two hundred and twenty team soccer tournament coming in, we don't have waste I weeds out there exit one. Welcome, welcome to the weed kitchen, you know.
And I know, that's great.
Yes, you know, you would think that the state, and, anyway, in Tennessee, that they would take care of them, they would make sure that's mowed, they ought to at least give us the money to cut paper. I mean, they would still see it look bad, it looks like it, but we're gonna give it.
That's funny.
But I'm gonna tell you, I don't, I, I, I don't get this thing every time, but I'm gonna vote for it this time. Just like the last time I voted.
Well, you know, so, Chad. Councilman, Mr. Mayor, I'm here.
Sure.
Councilman still brings up a, an, an excellent point. The, these wildflowers have been brought up, I know of at least three years, at least the past three years. There are, uh, new city managers. Uh, there are a lot of things that are discussed in council meetings that never, that never come to fruition. Things never get followed through. And, and, you know, this has been happening for years, so, you know, um, but I would like to see that situation rectified, to where the items that we discuss here in council meetings get followed through. Hey, little B.
So I'd say, uh, Nick, our new, uh, city manager down here, he's part of Calhoun State, and you know, I think, if we don't have to, but I've seen him with a grilled wall flower, he had wall, we used to go with wall flowers.
Is that, is it a woodman?
It is a crafter, or my friend, and this kind of people, crafter. And I'm not gonna put your watch.
But, and, and it's, it's, you know, there is still some maintenance that goes along with, with planting wildflowers. Hopefully, it's not, not as expensive or as, as like, or intensive.
I think I looked in there somewhere, a hundred and ninety acre, I don't know.
Hundred and ninety six. Thirty two acres, uh, times six, six, thirty two acres, that time, what is it? I think that was fourteen, uh, hundred and sixty-seven dollars per cut.
I know, I cleaned my new lawn, for the, it's about every, we bought that one, it cost us twenty-five thousand dollars, tore it up first year. We bought it, so, we bought a four-wheel ride tractor, the steel got stuck, the mud down there, it got ready, afraid to get something. It's just been, it's just been a mess, I mean, it's, it's a swamp there either.
I know, clean it, they got light, they got taller, wildflower, so they started cutting down, saving trees, and everything else, and blowing water on top of everything. And I look through, you got big dusty field on the freeway, both sides.
It's nothing that.
Little crap.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. If there are no other questions, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gravitt.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manning.
Yes.
Councilman Stoll.
We agree, yes.
Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Item P, resolution twenty-five sixty-five.
Resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor and or the, our city manager to enter into a professional services agreement. Where we treat architecture by professional services from design and engineering of fire station number two.
Make a motion to approve.
Gentlemen, let me make sure we, we're talking about the right, the one that's attached to the, uh, the booklet is the correct one, and that's what, as opposed to some bizarre reason, the one that was handed out, uh, is different. What this changes are, that, that we made with the architect, we used the documents, for some bizarre reason, architects, I don't care about any of your, but, uh.
Yep, I hear.
They, uh, they want to retain their rights and their plans, their drawings, and so on, and that's fine, and we've got no problem with that. What we pay for, and that, that's standard. But what we provided for is that, uh, upon completion of the project or termination of this agreement, the owner's right to use the instruments of service shall be confined to such use with regards to the structure, which is a subject of this agreement or any modification thereof. The owner's right to use shall not include or involve a new structure. In other words, if we're going to build a new fire hall at some point, we're gonna have to start the architectural process over again. If we're going to modify this existing fire hall under some subsequent time, then we can't use those plans. But again, otherwise, this is the standard AIA contract that we made the modification on. The second significant modification is the contract provided that we would pay a percent and a half a month interest on the third page, uh, for any account or any payment that was over thirty days old. We have modified that to provide for accounts unpaid for sixty days. Withdraw one point five percent for companies.
Can I ask a question? Mayor. Yes. Was, I, I know this is professional services, but did we bid this? Fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars?
Because it was a professional service, you don't have to.
I, I understand, that, that, that's why I said, I understand it's professional services. I know we don't have to, but that, uh, I don't know, I just wonder if this is an instance where awfully insured or something like that.
How personal does that seem to get out?
I understand the sentiment, I really, I do. Uh, also, I wanna get this show on the road.
Well, I, I.
I've been trying. There's another I like to ask about, is this architect using the old fire hall, still it's done, be decided in this fire hall?
Yes.
These are, you said, you can have one?
Yes, sir.
I'm non-sales, I happen to be a citizen of East Ridge, which I should explore, I know many of you folks. It is our intent to, in the design, I want you guys to have some handouts, we try to get the big ones to work, but, uh, some pictures of our proposed building, and, uh, our intention is to use as much of that old building as we can, the design is based around the dimensions of the existing metal building shell. Uh, we can't re, only thing that we can reuse out of that is the, is the bench, as we call it, it's the basic steel frame. The siding, uh, is, is basically stretched, and, and it will not, and, and the girds will need to be replaced, and so, the dimensions of the building that we designed, um, match that old frame, plus we've added one bay to the, um, to the, um, truck base. The intention, in order to make it so that the bill can be, um, more open, and have more contractors bid, and that particular metal building is provided by a specific metal building, uh, company. Another metal building company is not gonna wanna come in and add their frame onto that building. And so, it is our intention to bid it as if it's all new, with, with the, um, add, de-dubbed, added to it that is reusing that existing frame. Um, the, the, the subcontractor that put that building together told me that it, that we would be able to only save about seven dollars a square foot by using that existing building, and we don't know if that will, if, if that will be enough to offset the price of just buying the building, so we basically intend to bid it both ways. I don't know if that answers your question, but it is our intent to try to use it if, if it is the most economical way to use, to do it.
And what we brought up is because, would that be, would that be lost what we paid to save?
Uh, it, it would be able to reuse for something else, but I, I talked to the, I talked to the company that took it down and, uh, and they're, they, they're getting us all the information so that we can include that in the bidding documents and make it re-attempt to save.
That's something if, uh, can't be saved, that may be a, what we're looking for.
Sure.
I know when you tuck it down, I've asked him the question, just tell him, well, you're saying. When you tuck it down, I asked him the question, can you put this back like it is when we tuck it down? He said, yes.
Oh, yes, they can, and they can.
It would be right, he said.
The tip, the, the kicker for me is getting a structural engineer to sign off on somebody else's building and getting another metal building contractor that would be, um, wanting to bid on this project that might give us a price uh, to say, I won't use that other guy's stuff again. Because they're all very individualistic, the metal building suppliers are. They have their own system, way they like to do stuff. So it is our intent to try to, if at all possible.
Can you not get him to sign off on it?
He can, and he is hoping he will. That is not that, but, but we wanna be able to let other, in order to have competitive bidding, we need to let other contractors bid on it. And so that's the only way we can figure to do it that would not only be fair to the city, but provide, uh, the possibility for the savings.
Okay, thank you, Seth.
Um, did, I, I, I apologize, since Mike's not here, did y'all get a copy of the plans? I, I brought a set of, if I can handle that.
So you're flinging, somebody might tell me that if you can build a newer building and not use the old structure, it'd be cheaper than.
I think that's very likely.
Oh.
Just I think it too.
Well, if mine wasn't being the case, I could be, it wouldn't be losing if they, if they gave, if they really gave us, uh, land and shit.
Right.
Which I want, I want to see.
Right.
You may. Thank you for the next in line. I, uh, there are, we basically put together a schematic package, and I, I, I don't really ask for this. If I need to explain it, I can. Uh, we put together a schematic package to see that we can give to, uh, to a contractor and get it to make sure that we can meet the budget that Mike can present just a million dollar, a million dollar. We include everything that we're doing, and including our fees and all of that. So we, we put together that plan, uh, we put, um, Mike and his staff, a lot of the, uh, rig rigs that we did. Uh, the floor plan is, is very similar to the other building, uh, except that, like I said, we added that extra bay and, uh, and the intent is to basically just reskin that, 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 that shape of the other building.
Okay.
Can I ask you another question? You may not be able to, you may not pack the property yet. Were you having enough room down in the field for a lady?
Yes, yeah, if it's.
Before we have a discussion with it now, sorry.
It is, it is very tight, and that has been one of the biggest unknowns. And we actually did a preliminary design at first where we drove around the building, but it's expensive. For the site work that we went back to, uh, one where they'll just have to back the trucks in and have the, uh, their loading areas stuff out front. Uh, this way they're able, the side slopes about seven feet from, from second Thomas back to the back. And so that's, that just makes it difficult, and we're vessel and water to deal with and all that. So we feel like this is the most, uh, uh, the best use of the funds that are available. Uh, the general contractor that we had disciplined pricing, construction consultants, they, they've done a couple of fire halls recently in Cleveland that are similar in scope. So, um, it ends up being somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty-five dollars a square foot, including the, including the site work. About a hundred and ten to fifteen for the building and another twenty or twenty-five for the side. But we think we'll be able to save some more for that site work. Uh, it's just a function of, we've got to get the documents prepared and, and get them bid.
So is this the, is this the East Ridge resident price that you've quoted to us?
Absolutely, and I, and I, and I just thank you. I, I, I am honored to get a chance to do something here, and wanted to be a part of my community. I help, you know, do the church here, my kids went to school here. Uh, my wife teaches the East Ridge elementary, we're happy to be a part of the community. I know, uh, planning to use cable associates, if we're hired, uh, to do the work in Matt Williams, the, uh, their principal designer, I think he's here too. So anyway, Mike Price is doing the civil work, and he's done quite a bit of work for the city. And, and so we're excited for the opportunity.
Can I ask a question about the retention policy?
Yes.
Uh, can we use that property back there, would it be paid or put it under the rent?
Um, it isn't absolutely feasible, but it's a lot more expensive. And we did a scheme, our provisional scheme to do that, and we had about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the site work. And, and that, that was too big a hit for the budget that we have. And, uh, Mike tells me I cannot go over a million dollars, and I cannot go back and ask for more money. And so that's why we, we did, we actually did it using, uh, using large, they do large pipe, like fifty-four inch pipe. And, and we, uh, Mike Price did the layout for us. And it was just, and how it enabled us to drive all the way around the building, but it's just not worth it, just not worth it.
Would be a lot back if we could work it out a little bit.
We can, I can, and, and, and it's not our preference, but it also is a little, uh, you know, it, they're gonna have a buffer back there in the back, and we can just have, as little as retention policy really get used here, it's a wash, it's a money, but better than that.
Your fiscal is the best. How long, how do you start?
Um, we're ready to start now. It was our intention to spend about a month to get the rest of our documents together. Uh, like I said, you can see we've done quite a bit of work already, and got our preliminary stuff together. So we've got, we've got to do the rest of the construction documents, get the engineering finalized. Uh, it was our intent to try to be able to start construction somewhere around first of July. I gotta hurry.
Yeah, we're coming, we're catching.
Yeah, yeah, we're all busy. And, and actually, it's, 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 it's good that, that cities are starting to see some action again.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Second, do we have a motion in a second?
Exactly.
Number, do we have a question? So, the motion is to approve.
Yes, sir.
Yes, approve.
Fifty cents.
Uh, yes, to approve, uh, resolution twenty-five sixty-five, which would, which would be this, this contract. Got a question?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Peddle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell?
Yes.
Mayor Labor?
Yes.
They can start on tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, out of F, discuss and or take action on purchasing a truck for the traffic control of the parks. Make a motion, approve. Second. I don't have anything else.
I put one in box, he's not working.
God, I don't know what box it is. This?
Yes, right there.
How, how much is this truck?
Eighteen pounds.
Is it anybody's?
Forty-five, five.
We're asking for it in the next budget, but they're.
They made it down.
They, uh, because we got forty-five dollars. I'm gonna go back and consideration question, is this gonna be in next year's budget? Or are we going to amend this year's budget? Maybe maybe this year's budget, but well, have the chief say that. Let, let me, let the.
If you purchase it within the next, Mayor Jean, guess it will be in this year's budget. It will be add, if you choose to do it, we will add it to the, to the budget, to this budget of it.
How long will that be new paint, now, this, that new?
Uh, I think we, probably split September.
Been a long time.
So, so. We called a, a paint rig here without.
They don't.
Truck.
Well, the plan, the original plan, yes, Mr. Evans, was to, uh, because like, like I said before, our existing service truck is fifteen years old. Mr. Height, Diane was sitting there, and we all sit down and talked about a safer way to do what we need to do. It's time to replace our service truck, so we're just gonna refurbish it, still the same fifteen year old truck, and make our, make our paint truck out of it. And that was the, the plan to do that. Well, when they left, even the paint machine wasn't in the budget that you guys approved for it to be in there. Just have them amend the budget just by that piece of equipment. And the truck is two years later, we still don't have a truck. So the, the whole goals, you know, this is a difficulty dealing with new management. Continually, you get close to getting what you have tried to accomplish, and you have to start over.
I, uh, believe me, I appreciate what you're trying to do. Believe me, I, I certainly do, I really do. And, and, but, I just, I just really don't feel comfortable in, in making any further, uh. I guess high dollar expenditures right now. I would rather wait until, until next year's budget and include it in slots.
Certain months, he can just paint that street.
My, well, that doesn't, for, did any, put it in next year's budget, but that's just, that's just my opinion.
I like that, Mr. Two. Why do we need a four, four, four by four extended cab for your duty to ride around the telephone, the telephone?
Well, Jack, Mr. Kettle, excuse me, the typically, I mean, we do a lot more than just ride around and go. We, we are emergency response. The city, last year, Callahan left the parking lot, twenty-eight degrees, a T-Dog truck had knocked down a traffic signal, it was laying on the road up there, and this, and this. So we have to respond to instances like that. Well, I, I had my four-wheel drive truck as a supervisor, I had to let another supervisor have it, because he was, didn't have anything to ride around with to work this night. So I'm sitting there driving my personal vehicle to the traffic shop, because it's four-wheel drive, pull our truck loose out of the parking lot, because it was frozen to the ground. And have to try to respond in those conditions up there to try to get that red light picked up out the street. On top of that, we responded when trees are down, all types of incidents. In the city, we don't have enough four-wheel drive vehicles to even respond to things. We have to share what we do, we gotta find the two-wheel drive regular cab trucks. And so I'm trying to look forward to the future to say, you know, number one, safety of our crews, and trying to get out of here and work in these conditions. Yes, you don't need it, do you need it? But that's.
Yeah, it's tough, or turn it, if our streets aren't all struck like it's supposed to be, and we have some kind of incident out there, we.
Typically, that would be discretionary function, uh, unless it's, if there's a complaint to us, we're on.
If you got W L line, and somebody crossed it, that you can't, they come back, I'm like, turn it, you can't see it, it's just barely there.
Well, there's a lot of, there's, there are certain instances under the manual uniform traffic control devices that regulate if you have a certain line of traffic flow across the street, the street meets a certain width, it's required under the manual to be struck.
So, are you saying, your example, the W L lines have faded out, we just didn't, we didn't.
As long as we don't, we haven't mentioned.
What is your maintenance history? That's what's gonna happen.
You wanna be.
And what you're gonna do is, somebody's gonna come to my office, you got Mike, when's the last time you should paint it? You know, third street.
Well, we've had this machine since September with no truck, and which, well, anyway. Uh, but, but, and here we are, six weeks away from when the new budget's gonna begin.
Because they've been, they could be painted in that six weeks, I said, well, Slade, he's got a certain time, and he's gonna paint it.
I call for a motion, please.
Well, I, I, we've got too many, we've got too many questions.
Because I'm just trying to, you know, they've got certain time, and they paint, you know, in summer, in summer months.
I understand that, but. Where is our, what level are we at in our vehicle replacement?
Well, just getting, got, not being low, it's about true. We're trying to reclaim it. It could come out of state, true, yes, that one's getting low too, but.
Well, I also found, sorry, I also found a light on in there, which I don't know why it was put in to the point where under vehicle repairs and maintenance, put it under traffic control, there's fifteen thousand dollars sitting there. And I probably used pretty little of that. And there's fifteen grand sitting there that I'm not touched.
Well, was this gonna be it, you guys?
Well, last year, it wasn't necessary, it, well, it, you know, I had Andy Ashford from, uh, uh, three weeks ago. Sorry, he, he dealt, he, he helped me come up with this, this quote that, that I gave to guys. Um, but I did reach out to, who had the statewide contract for four, the statewide contractor Sherwood Lake. Basically, the V eight motor, and the, the reason for the extended cab is sometimes we do have to carry red light components with us versus somebody holding their lap, driving down the, driving down somewhere, or even using a crew. Three of us could go to the scene without having to get dual trucks. We could actually report to the same thing, you could use this truck, being a four-wheel drive. And it's just an extended cab, I'm not asking for a four door, four big truck, it's just, it's just the extended cab truck, super cab, like the, my personal truck. But it's got a jumper seating back in it, that we can put our red light components in there and actually take another body to the, to the job, and we're actually reporting there.
Well, I, I, like I said, I'm not against you get, get the truck, but I'd just like to see you wait six weeks until we start, uh, until we. We start the new budget, and during that six weeks' time, you can go ahead and identify the streets if you hadn't already, that need to be redlined, repainted. You can go ahead and order the paint if you hadn't already done that. Uh, I think, I seem to recall you saying something about, you know, that the, the paint rig.
Yes.
Has the ability to be loaded and unloaded out of the back of the truck. So, yeah, I don't, I don't, I just don't see, and, and I don't have a problem having, you know, four-wheel drive extended cab, because I understand what you're saying, uh, but I would just like to see this way to the, to the next budget.
I agree. Just be, just in mind, when, when we do order a truck, whichever thirty days, ninety days, work for actually, actually physically be in front of us. Yeah, I think we have to do some modifications to the truck that we're working out of now, which, to incorporate, to put the paint back on its own. So that, for what I'm getting at, best case scenario, maybe paint this year. Because I'm depending on building maintenance to help me modify this truck to work, which he has done many times. But this is all of our businesses, you know, we're all, we have, we have other things to do as far as our other job responsibilities, and, you know, on top of trying to get this stuff together. My hope was, like I said, in the absence of Mr. Height when he left, this, the goal was, without the paint machine in September, over the winter months, we were gonna build all this stuff. And that just didn't happen. And I apologize for coming up in front, saying, I need this, I wish I had that. But again, it's just trying to reach out and say, this is a need.
It was the last time you need a thing.
Sir?
It was the last time y'all needed that.
I know. Yeah, we purchased a painting machine.
Yeah, I've said, yeah.
Yeah, as far as, uh, big ticket items, um, one thing, with supervisors' truck, uh, Mr. Pedals brought it before. They bought supervisors' trucks, uh, I think in two thousand and twelve, and the ones we had before that were ninety-eight pounds.
Do you find the, uh, what, any money he's got in there now?
A ride down traffic control, uh, where you would normally be at eighty-three point twenty-three percent, they're at sixty-eight percent.
Now, did you say that fifteen thousand?
Yes, actually, you have, uh, fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and two cents left.
How much was this total budget?
Its total budget is a hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
But on top of that, excuse me, my operating supplies is less than thirty thousand. We maintain all traffic signals, we have all the payment margins, we have all the signing margins, the city, less than thirty grand a year.
Well, I, I understand, don't, you know, don't, you, you come before us very, very, very seldom. And, and I apologize for that, and I thank you for that, I really do, you know, but, but. Just for all, for, from this point forward to all the parking heads, I'm gonna be a no vote on any major expenditures. I'll vote on your truck tonight, but from here forward, no more capital expenditures for us. We have, because we've gotta build our balance back up.
Out of curiosity, if, if, if we were to tomorrow, best case scenario, we wouldn't be here.
be here?
We're right here in the middle of new, new models coming out, that's why I don't have a piece of paper to hand you and say, I can go get this truck tomorrow for forty-four thousand dollars, because Ford has gone over to the aluminum bodies, so trying to get, what I, what I have to try to purchase in a Ford is probably two thousand and sixteen, which would be moved with a steel body.
Yeah, they only went to the aluminum bodies on specific models, they didn't go to their whole fleet being in steel bodies.
I, when I was talking to the vendor in the Ford that has a statewide contract, he would give me a prospect, and he said, even if they have two fifty, if we're going to be aluminum body. That's what he addressed to me, and I may have totally misunderstood you. But I'm just, I'm playing with weeds here, trying to get things done, and again, and I don't want to put anybody under any delusions, I'm going to make this happen if I have your truck tomorrow, but we'll be our very best in coordinating with the other departments to help us make this happen. But we, once you get to those fifty-degree points in the fall, because we are, it's air dry paint, it's not heat, it's not heated paint, so you need ambient temperature to, so it don't track, it don't track at all over the world, and it's dry. And that's why we try to paint in July and August.
What are these prices here? Is it two fifty, take all of them?
No, it was a, it was a two-fifteen spec sheet, and it was a two-sixteen.
You got two prices here.
Yes, yes, it was. It's, it went up to, I think he said, two-point-five percent on the two-sixteen, and that was the price I got in the fall.
He's got one here listed for forty-three five eighty-five, then one listed for forty-four three ninety, plus the two-point-five percent, brings it up to forty-five five.
Right.
Now, this one over here is forty-three.
It may be.
This one over here is forty-five five.
It was probably options, it was probably options.
Did you bid on that? You bid this yet?
No, sir. No, sir, I didn't have the money to bid it.
Okay.
I think, just to kind of echo what's already been said, understand, this is not your, you didn't, you didn't cause the situation. We need to, as we go forward, we need to plan more effectively than we can. And I, that's just, that's just all there is to it, and, and Miller's going to be a big part of that. And we, we need to, we need to do things like build the vehicle replacement fund and actually have, again, a comprehensive plan for different department needs, when we're going to replace vehicles. I know we do that to some degree, but obviously, we don't do it completely.
Well, for fifteen years, like I said before, we, we paid that truck work, we've taken care of it, it's still, it's our service truck, it's used every single day. And it is, trying to convey a need from city services to here is very difficult. You know, you can say something in passing to us, the city manager or finance director, oh, we'll look into it, but the need is so great, you know, everybody needs something. And just, so you go, okay, 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 and the next thing you know, fifteen years have gone by. And, you know, it's just, I'm trying to change things slowly. I mean, traffic control is a very, very important part of public safety, what we do, and trying to actually, for twenty-seven years, I've done it the hard way and slow way and inefficient way. And just, we're just taking baby steps to try to make our job more efficient and more safe for the people here and for our staff.
Well, like I said, you've come before us very seldom, very, very seldom, and, and like I said, I'll repeat, I, I very much appreciate it that, that you don't, because sitting up here, you know, constantly putting this money when it's not in the budget, that gets old very quickly. And so.
Do we have a motion in second?
We do. I'm making a motion, mayor, second.
Do you have a motion in second?
I don't want to make a motion, I'm going to put it out immediately.
We will approve the money for him to do that. I mean, that's what he says, he's got.
Yeah, we're going to rebrand it. Yeah, because like she said, if we have to, we'll go straight, straight to the budget.
And I think that would be an appropriate way to go, let's, A, A, let's, let's approve the potential expenditure, but B, let's, let's bid it out and get the best price we can get. And so if you all wouldn't mind withdrawing your motion in second, then we, we could vote on. I'll draw my second.
I'll work it out.
Thank you.
Mike, can I ask you this? Since this truck is just going to be used stationally, couple months out of the year, I mean, you're, you're, just don't ask for all the bells and whistles for this, for trucks to ride around here, you know?
Well, the only thing that was going to be on that truck, which is you almost have to pay to take it off, the last two trucks we got had Achilles injury. You know, that's the.
Yeah, we don't mention that.
But you almost have, it just comes as a standard, basic fleet kit now. I mean, the last two trucks we bought had Achilles injury for the supervisors, because that's, you almost, that's just how they make them now. But again, it's, the only thing that's a bustle is going to do a texture grip in the bed of it, so as we calm up to down on the side of it, doing site work, kind of make it less slippery in the mornings or when it's wet, and we're working on the signs. As far as, it's just a basic Excel truck. But I'll get with Ms. Diane and reach out to the vendors, the statewide contractors, who's got the statewide contractor trucks, and try to get y'all on that, that's our current number.
All right. Motion. Here, commissioner, go ahead and bid it out, we have to make that straight to the budget.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion in the second? Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stinkle.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have dealt with items G and H. We have item I, group of purchase picket tables and grills. But they had.
I don't have anything on it.
I have any grill that we're talking about.
Here you come, Rick.
I had barbecue pit.
No, we didn't get a barbecue pit, that was what we asked for. We were supposed to get a barbecue pit and a fireplace. We've got this fireplace. Basically, let me, let me just, especially after Mike was just up here. We've got a very nice pavilion. To get fourteen picnic tables and not buy any of the grills, it's going to be, you know, nine thousand dollars. And I kind of agree with you folks at this point in time, and I've been sitting back there thinking about how I can work around, and how our crew can work around to make it happen. You've got J-Fest coming up, but you won't need anything up in that side. Soccer's fixing to get to the point where they don't play much in June, July. Let's try to make it into the next budget and revisit this, and let me see, Melvin, if you'll let me use that truck we use sometimes at long flatbed, so we can haul some, when it comes time, we got big events, we can haul some picnic tables around. I had Ken give it to our picnic tables, and I think we can make it until we can get into the new budget, and then after that, then we'll, we'll try to put this in, what, in the fifty-five thousand dollars or something, I think Mike makes a good point on that. I just wanted to make sure that something was said to you folks about it, because it's my job, and if one of y'all come down by there, and, you know, somebody didn't like the color of the roof, and somebody didn't like the color of the brick, and somebody didn't like the color of the, the counter, that, you know, I didn't want somebody to come down there, and I didn't want this man to jump on because I didn't have a picnic table. So basically, I, I think, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is something we can weight on to the new budget, but I do think it's something we need.